Today, we're gonna get into our last two periods of the Old Testament. So we're almost through the Old Testament. Thanks for toughening it out all the way here. So today, we're gonna do the Yellow Period, which is the Return. The yellow stands for brighter days, they're gonna return back to the land. And we're gonna do the Orange Period, the Maccabean Revolt. So these are our last two in the Old Testament. Last time we left off, we talked about the divided kingdom, we talked about the exile. Remember, the northern kingdom got exiled first. They were mixed with five other nations, got kinda exiled into oblivion. And then the southern kingdom didn't fare much better, they were exiled. And the last thing we got in our story was the king of the south is being brought back to Babylon, blinded and in chains. And prophets, we talked a lot about the prophets last time. Jeremiah tells us, told us that they would be in exile for seventy years. And then angel Gabriel came to Daniel and told him that seventy years wasn't long enough. That it was gonna be seventy times seventy, seventy years, which was about four hundred ninety years, which brings us right about to the time of Christ. And even though they get to go back to the land after seventy years, their hearts are still in exile. So that's where we're gonna kind of pick up our story today. And we talked a lot about the prophet Isaiah last time, and how he predicted a lot of this stuff. And Isaiah is the one that talked about Cyrus, the king of Persia. Persia is gonna take over as a world power. And Persia is gonna be a little bit nicer to the Jews. And Isaiah predicted, he calls him by name, he says Cyrus, in Isaiah forty-four and forty-five, he says, "I saved Cyrus, my shepherd, who fulfills my every wish. He shall say of Jerusalem, 'Let her be rebuilt; and of the temple let its foundation be laid.'" Remember, in the last wave, they destroyed the temple, so the temple has been destroyed. And a lot of things in that temple, they never found, the Ark of the Covenant, nobody knows where that is, except for Indiana Jones. They lost, they destroyed the temple. Then chapter forty-five of Isaiah, he's talking to Cyrus here, the prophet Isaiah is talking to Cyrus. He's saying, "For the sake of Jacob, my servant," he's speaking for the Lord, and the Lord is saying, "For the sake of Jacob, my servant, of Israel, my chosen one, I have called you by your name, given you a title, though you knew me not. I am Lord, and there is no other, there is no other, no God besides me. It is I who are new, though you know me not." So he's saying, "Look, Cyrus, God can use people that don't even know who he is." And God's gonna use the world power to make this story come about, to bring his people back into the land. So when we get this prediction in Isaiah, they're gonna come back to the land. So the Return is basically three waves. And these are the books of Ezra and Nehemiah that you read, Ezra and Nehemiah. They left in three waves, and they're gonna come back to the land in three waves. And there's some prophets in this period as well. The main prophets are Zechariah, Haggai, and Malachi. And this is also where the book of Esther fits in. I don't know if you've ever read the book of Esther, but it's a very interesting book. It's actually one of the few books in the Bible where the name of God isn't even mentioned. But it's the story of this young girl called Hadassah. And she's in exile, and they're in the land of Persia. And the king of Persia has this dispute with the queen, and he kinda just gets rid of the queen, and says, "All right, I need a new queen." And they have like this beauty contest, they gather all these women from all the land, and they bring them to the king. And Esther, she takes the name of Esther, she ends up being the queen of Persia, even though she's a Jew, and he doesn't even know that she's a Jew. And there's this right-hand man that the king has by the name of Haman. And Haman hates the Jews, he wants to annihilate the Jews. And he comes up with this wicked plan, that he has the king sign this decree, that these people, who he convinces the king, are gonna rise up against him. He has this decree to abolish these people, much like the Holocaust. And these Jews are gonna be destroyed. And Esther hears about this from her people, and they kind of plead with her and say, "Look, you're the only one that can help us here." But to go before the king uninvited, there's a sentence of death. And Esther's gonna have to go before the king and tell him to save the Jewish people. And she risked her life to do that, and there's a quote in there that, "You were born for a time such as this." And she was put in that position for a reason, to save her people from annihilation. So it's a really neat story, so if you have time, go back and read the book of Esther. There's two movies, well, for kids, there's a Veggie Tales episode called Esther, one of the best ones. Watch that one. There's also a movie called One Night with the King, that I'd recommend. It's a really good movie that portrays the story of Esther. So this is where that story takes place, when they're in exile. So three waves, they're gonna come back in the land. And we start with the book of Ezra. And we read in chapter one, the decree of Cyrus. "In the first year of Cyrus, king of Persia, in order to fulfill the word of the Lord spoken by Jeremiah, the Lord inspired King Cyrus of Persia to issue this proclamation throughout his kingdom, both by word of mouth and in writing. Thus says Cyrus, king of Persia, 'All the kingdoms of the earth of the Lord, the God of heaven has given to me, and he has also charged me to build him a house in Jerusalem, which is in Judah. Whoever therefore among you belongs to any part of his people, let him go up, and may his God be with him. Let everyone who has survived in whatever place he may have dwelt be assisted by the people of that place, with silver, gold, goods, and cattle, together with free-will offerings for the house of the God in Jerusalem.'" So the king is issuing this decree, that these people can go back to the land and rebuild this temple. And it's very, very similar to the coming out of Egypt. Remember the story of Egypt and Exodus? And it's actually the paganists that actually give them gold and silver and food for their journey. Same thing happening here, the Persians are actually giving them gold and silver and things to give them by on the journey. So you can see the story is kind of reoccurring over and over again. So they're gonna come back to this land in three waves. The first wave is gonna be Zeroboam. And he's actually in the bloodline of Jesus, so he's gonna be in the first wave. And he's the one that's going to rebuild the temple. The second wave is where Ezra comes back, and Ezra's a scribe, and he's the one that's gonna give the law. First, they're gonna build the temple, then they're gonna get the law. And then in the third wave, that's where Nehemiah comes in. And he's the one that's gonna build the city walls, gonna build the city. And again, put this in relation to, we're gonna look at how this all relates to Jesus here in a minute. But you know, Jesus is crucified, the temple is destroyed, the temple rises again. He gives the new law, he gives a new law, and then we build the city of God. We as the church are building the city of God. So we kind of replay this story, we'll get to that in the last session of the church. So let's look at these three waves, the first wave is Zeroboam. He's gonna come back in 537 B.C., he's gonna build the temple, it's gonna take him twenty years. First time it only took seven, this time it's gonna take him twenty years to rebuild this temple. But not everybody's gonna come back to the land. One of the dangers of being in exile, being away from the Lord, is that you just might like it. And a lot of these people were in Babylon with Persia, and they kind of became very comfortable. You know, they had, you know, a nice house, a nice job, you know, electric garage doors. Yeah, they just didn't wanna come back. You know, so these people, not everybody came back, but a lot of them did. And when they get back, they're gonna run into problems on the outside and problems on the inside when they're trying to build this temple. Problems on the outside is that the Samaritans come in and they wanna help. Do you remember reading about this, they're coming in like, "Hey, you guys are building the temple, but we can help build the temple, you know, we worship your God." And what do the Jews say? They're like, "No, you have nothing to do with this building of the temple." And we think, "Well, why would they say that? Well, they're offering to help build this temple." But you gotta remember, the Samaritans are those people in the north that were mixed with five other nations. And they do worship the God of Israel, but they worship many, many other gods. And God is just one God of many gods. And they don't really have the proper reverence for this God. And they're telling them, "You know, if you don't understand what you're doing, and you're not gonna have the proper reverence for the one true God, then you can't have any part of building this temple." And it kind of reminds me of that, you know, a lot of people say that Catholics are mean, because, you know, they don't let other people from different denominations receive the Eucharist. But we have to understand what it is that we are receiving, that that is truly the body and blood of Christ. And Saint Paul says, you know, "If we don't receive the Lord worthily, we eat and drink our own condemnation." So we have to understand that Eucharist is a sign of unity, and that unity has been broken. We can't pretend that there's a disunity there. So it's not to be mean, but we have to understand what it is that we're building. So they tell the Samaritans they can't help, so they run into a lot of problems there. The Samaritans start complaining. But they also run into problems on the inside. You know, they start building their own homes. And it gets to the point where they spend more time on their own homes, and their own dreams, and their own things of the world that they wanna accomplish. And they kind of put the things of the Lord to the side. And this is where Haggai, the prophet, comes in and kind of tells them, "Look, you're cheating God. You're cheating God, you're spending more time on the things of this world than you are on the temple of the Lord." And we come and kind of run, again, remember, keep putting yourself in the story. We do the same thing, sometimes we push God off to the side, because we have our own ambitions, our own dreams, our own homes, you know, we kind of forget about God, and that's what's happening. That's why it's taken them so long to rebuild this temple. So they're running into a lot of problems. And this is a good time to point out the different literal and spiritual senses of the scriptures. And Jeff Cavins actually talks about this in the very beginning of the study, I never really mentioned this, but there's the literal sense of the scripture. And this is in the catechism of the Catholic Church. It's in the catechism, Article 117, where it talks about the literal and spiritual senses. It gives us a guide to how to read the scriptures. The first thing is the literal, like the temple, it is a building, you know? This is where they worship God, the Holy of Holies, it's a building. So what is the scripture literally saying, if this is a building? But then the spiritual senses, there's three spiritual senses that we also have to look at when we read the scriptures. There's the allegorical sense. And the allegorical sense is, how does this relate to Christ? How does this relate to Jesus? And think of what Jesus says, "Destroy this temple, and in three days, I will rebuild." Jesus is the temple, he's saying, "I am the new temple." So Jesus is the temple, that's kind of the allegorical sense, that Jesus represents the temple. He represents the temple, and in 70 A.D., that building will be destroyed and never be built again, because we have the new temple, we have Jesus. The second thing, the second spiritual sense is the moral sense. And this is, how does it relate to us? You know, I keep telling you, put yourself in the story. How does this relate to me and my life? And we, as the bride of Christ, remember, in marriage, we true become one. We are the bride of Christ, we become one with Christ. So we, in a sense, are that temple as well. Remember when Saint Paul says, "Our body is a temple of the Holy Spirit." So we become living stones in that temple. Jesus is building this, he's the cornerstone, and he's building this new temple, the church, with living stones. And he has to work with people like us, who can cheat and lie and steal and be greedy and lustful. And that's what his challenge is, to build this temple with living stones. So we are the temple. And then the third is the antagogical sense, and this is, how does it relate to the future? How does it relate to heaven? Remember, there's gonna be a new Jerusalem, a new heaven, and a new earth. So this is a perfect example to show us how we can look at these different spiritual senses when we read the scriptures, and that the temple represents more than just a building. It represents Jesus, it represents us, it represents our future kingdom in heaven. So these are the problems I run into. So Zeroboam is the main character in building the temple. And then Ezra is the scribe, that's gonna come in after they're building in, and they're gonna give the law. Because the church is more than just a building. You know, we can have the building, but once we have the building, we have to change our hearts and perform it with the truth. We can't just show up and go into the building. We are the church. So Ezra's gonna come in, the second wave, in 458 B.C., is when he comes. And he's gonna give them the law. And there's a really good verse in here, from Ezra, chapter seven, verse 10, where he says, "Ezra had set his heart on the study and practice of the law of the Lord, and on teaching statutes and ordinances in Israel." So that sums it up in one sentence, he's gonna study the law, he's gonna practice what he studies, and he's gonna teach it. And it's a good, it's a good model for us as we raise our children. We gotta know our faith, we gotta learn our faith. We have to live our faith, and we have to teach it to our children. You know, you can't teach them something you're not willing to do yourself. So that's kind of the three steps, learn your faith, live your faith, teach your faith. And that's what Ezra's all about here, the scribe's gonna come in, and he's gonna have to deal with these people who have forgotten their story, that's why they got exile. They were worshiping false gods, so he's gonna put things right again. And they go to some pretty drastic measures here. There's a part in here where he talks about marriage. In Ezra, chapter nine, they talk about mixed marriages. And this is a big problem through the whole story, that they're mixing with these other nations. And remember that Solomon was the wisest man in the world. He was the wisest man in the world, this great king. But what happens at the end of his reign, he becomes a tyrant. And the scripture gives one reason why he became a tyrant, what was it? He had all those wives, you know? They changed his heart, they turned his heart. And the Lord's saying, you know, "These mixed marriages are a problem. They're marrying these people, and the people are turning them away from the Lord." And they go through this drastic measure, they just rid themselves of these false, these foreign wives and children. Now, you can't use this excuse to go home and say, "All right, honey, you're out of here. We are unequally yoked, and you're holding me back." Things change in the New Testament. And the New Testament, the teaching on this in the New Testament, on mixed marriages, you know, is, you know, it also, it does still present a problem if we're marrying outside of the church, and they're very real problems. And a lot of people think, "Well, for the sake of the marriage, you know, let's just neither one of us practice our thing," and that's a danger, you know? So when, if we're marrying somebody, and that person says, "Well, I'll marry you, but you have to give up your Catholic faith," then we're putting somebody, a person, ahead of God. Or God always comes first, so that's always a danger in a mixed marriage. But this is what the catechism says about mixed marriages. "Differences of confession between spouses does not constitute an insurmountable obstacle for marriage, when they succeed in placing in common what they have received from their respective communities, and learn from each other the way in which each lives in fidelity to Christ. But the difficulties of mixed marriages must not be underestimated. They arise from the fact that the separation of Christians has not yet been overcome. The spouses risk experiencing the tragedy of Christian disunity even in the heart of their own home. Disparity of call can further aggravate these difficulties. Differences about faith and the very notion of marriage, but also different religious mentalities can become sources of tension in marriage, especially as regards the education of children. The temptation to religious indifference can then arise." In other words, well, if we're gonna fight over religion, which does not have any religion at all. So there's a danger in the mixed marriages, but it's saying, "These problems are not insurmountable." And the New Testament response gives us hope in this. And this is in Corinthians, it talks about mixed marriages. Saint Paul gives us some advice on husbands and wives, and how wives can save their husbands, and husbands can save their wives. To the Mary, this is Corinthians, 1 Corinthians, chapter seven, verse 10. "To the Mary, however, I give this instruction, not I, but the Lord. A wife should not separate from her husband, and if she does separate, she must either remain single or become reconciled to her husband. And a husband should not divorce his wife. To the rest I say, not the Lord, if any brother has a wife who is an unbeliever, and she is willing to go on living with him, he should not divorce her. And if any woman has a husband who is an unbeliever, and he is willing to go on living with her, she should not divorce him. For the unbelieving husband is made holy through his wife, and the unbelieving wife is made holy through the brother. Otherwise, your children would be unclean, whereas in fact, they are holy." So the New Testament response is that we can save each other through our spouses, but the important thing to remember is that we gotta keep God first, or we never place another human being ahead of God and say, "I'm gonna give up my faith for this person, so we don't have conflict." So it's kind of a good teaching to give us tools of mixed marriages. Now, the third wave is Nehemiah. And Nehemiah's gonna come in, and the book of Nehemiah, he's talking about building the city, building the walls around Jerusalem, that's kind of the third thing. I don't know if you noticed in the reading, where when they're building, they have a tool in one hand and a shovel in the other hand. So they're building, but at the same time, they're ready for a battle. They're ready for a battle. And again, this is another good image of how we raise our children in this culture. We're always building, we're always teaching. Right now, I have a shovel, I'm building, I'm teaching, I'm learning the scriptures, I'm learning the faith. But we also have to have our spiritual weapons, we have to guard our children with the truth, we have to defend them in the spiritual warfare that we're in. We can't pretend that we're not in a war, that we're not in a spiritual war, and that the enemy is not after our children, the enemy is trying to change us, trying to change our faith. So we have to be ready, we have to be always on guard to fight, but also to build, and not live in fear that, we're so afraid of the enemy that we're not gonna build, we're not gonna learn anything else, we're just gonna live in fear. And I always think of the churches and how we lock our churches. It's kind of a sad thing to me that we have to lock our churches. The church that I grew up in is never locked, it's open twenty-four hours a day. And I can't tell you how many times, as a teenager, that I went in there at midnight, or one in the morning, and just sat in the dark church in front of the tavern after, and have access. And it just seems sad that the one place where everyone in the world should be welcome, we can't get in. We can't get in. And the number one reason cited for locking our churches is vandalism. And it's kind of like, a fear of the enemy is a victory for the enemy. We can't get in because we're afraid of the enemy, so we're just gonna lock the church. But Matthew Kelly brought this up, he said, you know, because the number one reason cited is vandalism, you know, we could fix that problem with perpetual adoration. If people were willing to be in there at all times with our Lord, it wouldn't be a problem. There's always be somebody there. And there's some churches in the country that have that, where they have people in there twenty-four hours. So again, we have to be willing to build, we have to be willing to fight, and not let our fear of the enemy destroy our building. So these people are building, and they're ready for battle, they're ready to fight, they're ready to defend their faith. So that is, in summary, the Return. So they have these three waves, they build the temple, they give the law, and they build the city walls. So that's the Yellow Period. Now, we'll go into the Maccabean Revolt, we're gonna go into the Orange Period, our final period before the coming of Christ, the final period, the Orange. And something very important's gonna happen to spark some more storyline here, is that the world power is gonna change again. Remember, the Persians were very tolerant to the Jews, very helpful to the Jews, actually. But the Greeks are gonna take over now as the world power. And the Greeks are gonna come in by the leadership of Alexander the Great. And Alexander the Great was this just conquering war hero, he took over the world, he just swept through Asia, annihilating all these places, and they stopped just short of India, just because his troops were just so worn out. And Alexander the Great wasn't the kind of leader that would be like on a walkie-talkie saying, "Go here and go there," he was the kind that would say, "Follow me in the battle," and he would lead his troops. And he was a master of war mine, he was actually tutored by Aristotle growing up, so. I was tutored by Mr. Turner. And this guy has Aristotle, so he's a very, he's got a master of war mind, but he didn't really plan for the future. And he died suddenly of a viral infection, leaving this vast empire to his generals. And there was five generals, but two dynasties in particular that kind of took over from Alexander the Great, the Ptolemies and the Seleucids. Now, when Alexander the Great came into Jerusalem, he had every intention of conquering the Jews, because they weren't bowing down and worshiping Greek ways. And his goal really was called Hellenization, to make the whole world Greek. He wanted the whole world to speak Greek, to worship Greek gods. And when he came in, he was so impressed with the high priest, that he allowed the Jews to continue worshiping their God, continue with their practices. And when he dies, these two different generals take over, the Ptolemies and the Seleucids. And at first, the Ptolemies are in charge of Egypt, and all the way up north through the land, through the Jewish, to Jerusalem, so they're under the rule of the Ptolemies. And the Ptolemies were actually very tolerant of the Jews as well. They didn't force them to do anything, they let them practice their religion. And it's during this reign of the Ptolemies that the Septuagint is written. And we always wonder about these different forms of the Bible. Remember the, you know, again, God uses the world powers as a significant part of this story. And the fact that the whole world is being conquered by the Greeks, and the whole world is making, being made to speak Greek, it's all becoming one language right before the time of Christ. Right before the time of Christ, when we're gonna have to, when the church comes, we're gonna have to give the good news to the whole world, the whole world is kind of learning one language. And also, the Romans are gonna come after the Greeks, and they're gonna build these roads. So again, evangelization, they're gonna be able to spread the good news to the whole world. But the Ptolemies come in, and they want to translate the Bible into Greek. There's been a diaspora, the Jews are spread out all over the place. And there are different places, they're not all in Jerusalem anymore, so they wanna translate the Bible into Greek. And this is when this happens, around 250 B.C. In the city of Alexandria, Egypt, seventy scholars, they go into these, or seventy-two, they go into these private hall chambers, and they translate the Hebrew Bible into Greek. And the miracle, they say, happens, is that these seventy scholars come out and their translations are identical. It kind of gives them an improvement, that this is a true translation. So some of these Bibles, some people ask, "Well, why is the Catholic Bible different than the Protestant Bible?" Well, some of these books, like Maccabees, were never written in Hebrew, they were written directly in Greek. And a lot of the people, during the Reformation, these books that were written in Greek were actually taken out of the Bible. Luther took a lot of them, seven of them, out of the Bible. The Protestant Bible has sixty-six books, whereas the Catholic Bible has seventy-three. And the early church has always accepted the Greek translation of the Bible, from the very beginning. It wasn't until the Reformation that they took a lot of these books out. This is where this happens, where these books are translated all into Greek. And because Protestants don't have the book of Maccabees, they have what they call four hundred silent years, where nothing's happening. Because Maccabees is the one that translates us from the Return to the time of Christ. And it's not four hundred silent years, there's a lot of important stuff happening during this four hundred years. So they translate the Bible into Greek when the Ptolemies are reigning. And the Septuagint is the name of that translation that you've probably heard of. And this is also the time where the Pharisees and the Sadducees come into picture. People ask, "Well, where do these people come from?" We read about them in the Gospels, these Pharisees and Sadducees. Well, remember, the Jews were spread out everywhere, the temple's been destroyed. So they have these Pharisees that kind of act like the priests, the synagogues are built. They have these own little private churches, and the Pharisees were the priests that kind of taught the people the faith. The Sadducees were like the keepers of the temple, they were like the political leaders of the time. Jesus could hang with the Pharisees, they kind of believed everything, there was a lot in common between Jesus and the Pharisees. But the Sadducees only believed in the Torah, the first five books of the Bible. They didn't even believe in the resurrection. And that's why they were sad, you see? So Jesus didn't even really converse with us, like, "We have nothing in common, I can't even communicate, you don't even believe." But the Pharisees at least believed in the Word of God. So So the, you have the Pharisees and the Sadducees, and this is where they come into the picture. And as far as the resurrection, the Sadducees don't even believe in the resurrection, but this is a major theme in the book of Maccabees. When you read these books of Maccabees, think of, you know, this resurrection. They're kind of coming to see the light here, that this world is not everything there is. And these people are willing to sacrifice so much, they're willing to die for their faith. That's kind of what the book of Maccabees is all about. Because the Seleucids, those people up north, are gonna come out, and they're gonna kind of have a civil war with the Ptolemies, and the Seleucids are gonna win. And they're not nearly as tolerant as the Ptolemies, where they're more tyrannical, and they're under the leadership of a guy named Antioch Epiphanus, which means "God made manifest." He had a bit of an ego problem. And the Jews called him Antioch Epiphanus, which actually means insane madman. But he's gonna come down, and he's going to desecrate the temple. He's gonna take over the temple, he's gonna desecrate it, he's gonna put in false gods in there, he's gonna sacrifice pigs inside the holy place. And he's gonna desecrate this temple, and he's gonna try to make everybody in the area Greek. You're gonna learn, and they're different than previous people that come in and take over the land. They're not after the land, you know, like other people were. They're after their hearts, they don't wanna just kick them out of the land, they want their hearts. They want them to speak Greek, they want them to worship false gods. They're trying to change their way of life, they're trying to change their very identity. That is the goal of the Greeks here, that's what they're trying to do. And a lot of people went along with it, a lot of the Jews. And a lot of people went along with it, a lot of the Jews started saying, "Okay, we'll change with the world, the world's changing, we're gonna change too." And they built these gymnasiums, you can read about this. They built these in, let's see, in 1 Maccabees, Chapter 1, verses 13 through 15. They built these gymnasiums, and it says, "He authorized them to introduce the way of living to the Gentiles." Their upon, they built a gymnasium in Jerusalem according to the Gentile custom. "They covered over their mark of their circumcision and abandoned the holy covenant. They allied themselves with the Gentiles and sold themselves into wrongdoing." So a lot of people, a lot of the Jews are going into this. These gymnasiums, these men in the gymnasium were naked. And in their naked bodies, they have a sign of the covenant, what is it? Circumcision. So history tells us, they actually had reversal operations to hide their covenant with God. You know, and we do the same thing. We don't want people to know that we're Catholic out in public. I mean, how many people are self-conscious about saying a prayer before meal when they're out in a restaurant? When I was an extern at the Columbus VA, and I was all nervous and flustered, and they'd throw you out there to the wolves. And then I'm at lunch one day, and I just kind of had a bad day, and I was sitting there, and I looked around, and you know, he's looking at me, and kind of, quick, you know? And some guy saw me, some old guy, sitting in the corner, and he looked over and he's like, "You don't see that very often." I was like, "What?" "Me?" And he's like, "Yeah, you don't see that very often, people actually praying out in public." You know, it just kind of caught my attention. He was just kind of making that, just one of those old guys that sit around and watch people. And he saw me, said, "Do the signing with cross." But how many of us are afraid to make any kind of reference that we're Catholic out in public? Why? Because we wanna fit in. And whether you realize it or not, to be devout Catholic in this culture, people are gonna look at you like you're crazy. You're gonna be a fanatic if you wanna be a devout Catholic in this culture. And sometimes we kind of hide our signs of the covenant. We don't want people to know because we wanna fit in, we wanna get the good job, we wanna make people to think that we're just one of the people. And that's what these people are doing. And some of the Jews were outraged, they were outraged. And this Antioch Epiphanes, to make a point, he decides he's gonna make an example of one of the higher up families, one of the devout families. So he travels 17 miles northwest to the city of Baudin, to this place of the house of Maccabees. Manathias is the father, he has five sons. And he goes to this father, Manathias, and he says, "I want you to sacrifice to these false gods." And Manathias says, "No way." He says, "I understand that some of my people have worshipped your gods and some of my people have changed their ways, but I won't do it, and neither will my sons." And one guy who's a little scared kind of steps forward and says, "All right, I will." And Manathias goes, kills him right on the spot. He says, "No, you won't." And that's what begins the Maccabean revolt. These people revolt, and they say, "We won't, we won't give up our identity, we won't give up our faith." And they begin to fight back. And it's a 24-year revolt, but they take back the temple in just three years. It takes them just three years to take back the temple. And when they take back the temple, they have a rededication of the temple. And they light the lamps of the temple, but they only have enough oil for like one day. But miraculously, the lights stay lit for eight days. And they celebrate this feast of lights from here on out. It's a celebration called Hanukkah. If you ever wonder where Hanukkah came from, this is where it comes from. This is the celebration of lights. And it's in the Gospels, Jesus has some very important words during the feast of lights when he's in the temple. This is where he says, "I am the Son of God," he reveals this to people. So it's an important feast day for the Jews, this is where Hanukkah comes from. So they take back the temple. And Manathias and his family of the Maccabees, there's five brothers, but Maccabees is mainly about three of the brothers. And 2nd Maccabees is really, it starts a little earlier than 1 Maccabees and it overlaps through the first seven chapters. So 1st and 2nd Maccabees kind of overlap each other a little bit. But 1 Maccabees, Chapter 2. Manathias is on his deathbed, and he's speaking to his sons. He's speaking to his sons. And he goes through this litany of people in salvation history. He's reminding them that you can trust God. They're in this battle, they're in this warfare. And he's telling the people, "You can trust God, if you just do what is right." And he goes through this litany, he says, "Abraham found faithful, Joseph kept the commandment, Phineas had burning zeal, Joshua executing his commission, Caleb bearing witness before the assembly, David for his piety, Elijah for his burning zeal, Ananah, Hazaray, Michiel for their faith and saved from the fire, Daniel for his innocence was delivered from the jaws of the lion." He goes on and on about these people. He's reviewing the story of salvation history and saying, "Look, if you trust the Father, he won't abandon you, even if you're gonna be persecuted." And we're gonna be persecuted. Jesus says, "If they persecuted me, they'll persecute you." But he's telling his sons, "Our faith is worth dying for, and God will take care of you." Remember, all of Maccabees is about the resurrection. Remember the story of the mother and her sons in 2nd Maccabees? Where's the story of the resurrection? 2nd Maccabees, Chapter 7. I just gotta read a little snippet of this story, this is one of the greatest stories. There's this mother, and she has all these sons. And the Greeks are coming in and they're trying to force them to worship false gods. And one by one, he's killing off her sons while the mother is watching. She's watching her sons be killed. And it comes to the final son. And it says, "Antioch suspected insult in her words, thought he was being ridiculed. As the youngest brother was still alive, the king appealed to him, not with mere words, but with promises on oath, to make him rich and happy if he would abandon his ancestral customs. He would make him his friend and entrust him with high office." Does that sound familiar? "When the youth paid no attention to him at all, the king appealed to the mother, urging her to advise her boy to save his life. After he had urged her for a long time, she went through the motions of persuading her son. In division of the cruel tyrant, she leaned over close to her sons and said in their native language, 'Son, have pity on me, who carried you in my womb for nine months, nursed you for three years, brought you up, educated you, supported you. To your present age, I beg you, child, to look at the heavens and the earth and see all that is in them; then you will know that God did not make them out of existing things. In the same way the human race came into existence, do not be afraid of this executioner, but be worthy of your brothers and accept death, so that in the time of mercy I may receive you again with them.'" She had scarcely finished speaking when the youth said, "What are you waiting for? I will not obey the king's command. I obey the command of the law unto our forefathers through Moses. But you, who have contrived every kind of affliction for the Hebrews, will not escape the hands of God. We indeed are suffering because of our sins. Though our living Lord treats us harshly for a little while to correct us with chastisement, he will again be reconciled with his servants." You know, this is a beautiful story. The mother is saying, "Don't be afraid to die." I mean, how many mothers could do that? If you're watching one son after another be killed and still say, "Don't be afraid." It's all about the resurrection. These people are getting it now, they understand that there's more to this life. And there's nothing, nothing important enough to offend God, nothing that can make us turn our backs on God. So this is also something that we need to look at today. You know, where are we at today? This is a perfect example for us to step back and say, "Look at our culture. Look at us today." You know, because we live in a culture that says, "You can be Christians and live in America. You can be Catholic and live in America. But we're gonna change the definition of marriage. You're gonna have to change your worldview. You can stay in the land, but you're gonna have to change your worldview." And to that, I say, "No way." We gotta have the courage, the Maccabees, we gotta have the courage to say, "I won't change my faith. I won't conform my faith to the world, I'm trying to conform the world to my faith." Nothing, nothing is more wise or important than God's ways. Our ways are not God's ways. We have to trust the Father, even if we don't fully understand it, that God will not abandon us. Remember the story of salvation history, everyone who trusted the Father and found faithful, God took care of them. So we have to understand that we are in the middle of a Maccabean revolt. And some people, to get ahead, are saying, "Okay, fine, I'll go with what the world teaches, I'll change my ways." We can't, we can't. We have to put our foot down. And we need a Maccabean revolt, not a violent one, a spiritual. A spiritual Maccabean revolt, where Catholics stand up and say, "I'm not changing my faith, I'm not changing my faith." That's where we are today. And remember, it might cost you. We fear for the future, I fear for my children's future. But the time is now, where people are gonna have to decide, "Am I gonna lose my job, or am I gonna violate my conscience?" I mean, that's what it's come down to. Am I gonna lose my job, my business, or am I gonna violate my faith? Am I gonna violate my conscience? We have to have courage. And this is also in the Book of Maccabees, where we get a glimpse of the communion of saints. Their communion of saints, a praying for the dead. You know, and again, Protestants don't believe in this thing of the communion of saints. One of the reasons is they took Maccabees out of the Bible. Remember, Luther took these seven books. He also wanted to take out the Book of Esther, he wanted to take out the Book of James, and he wanted to take out Revelation, but he didn't get his wish. Because he formed the Protestant Reformation on two theories, sola fide, faith alone, and sola scriptura, the scripture alone. And in Romans, Chapter 3, verse 28, this is where he talks about faith alone. And he added, it says, "When you were saved by faith," he added the word "alone." He added. And if you have a Bible that says "faith alone," notice the word "alone," it's in italics. Notice the footnote, "inserted by Martin Luther." You know, there's only one place in the Scripture where it says "faith alone," "saved by faith alone," and it's in James, and it says, "You are not saved by faith alone." That's what it says, quote. You know, and remember, he wanted to take out the Book of James. And scripture alone, the scripture says in Timothy, "The pillar and foundation of truth is the church." So the scripture doesn't agree with this mode of scripture alone either. So Maccabees is not in there. And when you lose these books, when you break away from authority, you have an incomplete canon, and you start losing parts of the faith. And they don't have this communion of saints, which is one of the most beautiful teachings in our faith. And 2nd Maccabees, Chapter 12. Here's a story, this gives us a glimpse of purgatory of the communion of saints. Judas and his men, this is Chapter 12, verse 39. "Judas and his men went to gather up the bodies of the slain and buried them with their kinsmen and their ancestral tombs. But under the tunic of each of the dead they found an amulet sacred to the idols of Yanni, which the law forbids the Jews to wear. So it was clear to all that this was why these men had been slain. They all therefore praised the ways of the Lord and just the just judge who brings to light the things that are hidden. Turning to supplication, they prayed that the sinful deed might be fully blotted out. The noble Judas warned the soldiers to keep themselves free from their sin, for they had seen with their own eyes what happened because of the sin of those who had fallen. He took up a collection among all of his soldiers, amounting to 2,000 silver draugrass, which he sent to Jerusalem to provide for an exhortatory sacrifice. In doing this, he acted in a very excellent and noble way, inasmuch as he had the resurrection of the dead in view. For if he were not expecting the fallen to rise again, it would have been useless and foolish to pray for them in death. But if he did, this is with a view to the splendid reward that awaits those who had gone to rest in godliness, it was a holy and pious thought. Thus he made atonement for the dead, and they might be freed from this sin." He's praying for the dead, the dead that have been sinful. You know, because he believes that they can still be saved. You know, this is where you think of what purgatory is, what purgatory is. It's a reparation for sins. There's three main parts to the church. I don't think we understand how big our family is. There's the pilgrim church on earth, or before Vatican II, it was called the Church Militant, those that are still in the battle. There's the church suffering, and those are the ones in purgatory who are being purged. And there's the church triumphant, those who've achieved eternal glory, that are seeing the beautific vision, those in heaven, the saints. We don't pray for those in hell because they have no hope. And we don't pray for those in heaven, we don't pray for the saints. They don't need our prayers. They're there, we need their prayers. We need their prayers, and they pray for us, they're close to God. And it says in James, "The prayers of a righteous person has a powerful effect." And if our prayers are powerful on earth, or still conscious of ourselves, how much more powerful will they be in heaven? These prayers are powerful, we have access to the saints. Just because somebody dies doesn't mean that they're separated from the body of Christ. Our family is a big family, and all of these people are part of the church. You know, I'll pray for my Father until I know for sure that he's in heaven. We don't go canonizing people. You know, if you read in the obituaries, you know, sometime you see the word John R. Wood in there, "You better pray for me." "You better pray for me," you know, because I'm not a saint, I'm a saint in the making, just like all of you, but I'm not there yet, and I need your prayers, and you need my prayer. We're in this together. You see how we can help each other accomplish the goal? The church is a family, and it's a family, and it's a beautiful teaching. You know, C.S. Lewis, C.S. Lewis says this about purgatory. "Of course I pray for the dead. The action is so spontaneous, so all but inevitable, that only in the most compulsive theological case against it were deterred. And I hardly know how the rest of my prayers would survive if those for the dead were forbidden. At our age, the majority of those we love best are dead. What sort of intercourse with God could I have if what I love best were unmentionable to him? I believe in purgatory." Mind you, the reformers had good reasons for throwing doubt on the Romish doctrine concerning purgatory, as that Romish doctrine had then become. The right view returns magnificently in Newman's Dream. There, if I remember it rightly, the saved soul at the very foot of the throne begs to be taken away and cleansed. It cannot bear for a moment longer with its darkness to affront that light. Religion has claimed purgatory. Our souls demand purgatory, don't they? Would it not break the heart if God said to us, "It is true, my son, that your breath smells and your rags drip with mud and slime. But we are charitable here, and no one will upbraid you of these things, nor draw you away. Enter into the joy." Should we not reply, "With submission, sir, and if there is no objection, I'd rather be cleansed first. It may hurt, we know, even so, sir. I assume the process of purification will normally involve suffering, partly from tradition, partly because most real good that has been done to me in this life is involved in. But I don't think the suffering is the purpose of the purgation. I can well believe that people neither much worse nor much better than I will suffer less than or more. The treatment given will be the one required, whether it hurts little or much. My favorite image of this matter comes from the dentist chair. I hope that when the tooth of life is drawn and I'm coming around, a voice will say, 'Rinse your mouth out with this, this is purgatory. The rinsing may take longer than I can now imagine. The taste of this may be more fiery and astringent than my present sensibility can endure, but it will not be disgusting and unhallowed.'" So, you know, I heard one theologian say that we choose our own sentence in purgatory when we see our soul how it is now and how we know it is capable of becoming. We wanna be cleansed first. And the prayers of the saints and those in purgatory, you know, they're powerful. We can help each other accomplish our goal. We are one body. Remember the analogy of the temple? We become one with Christ, so we are the temple. Our bodies are a temple of the Holy Spirit. And there's a lot of scripture verses that talk about this one body. And we have no right to separate ourselves from the body, you know? People talk about a personal relationship with our Lord, and we have to have a personal relationship. But there's nowhere in the Scriptures that focuses on this personal relationship, as if, "I know what God's telling me to do, so I'm gonna do it this way, I don't care what everyone else is doing." We're part of a family. We have no excuse to separate ourselves from the body. To become one, you remember the marriage analogy? God, Christ marries the church, and we become one with them. Romans, Chapter 12, it talks about this one body. Romans, Chapter 12, it says, Chapter 12, verse 1. "I urge you therefore, brothers, by the mercies of God, to offer your bodies as a living sacrifice, holy and pleasing to God, your spiritual worship. Do not conform yourself to this age, but be transformed by the renewal of your mind, that you may discern what is the will of God, what is good and pleasing and perfect. For the grace given to me, I tell everyone among you, not to think of himself more highly than one ought to think, but to think soberly, each according to the..." each according to the measure of faith that God has apportioned. For as one body we have many parts, and all the parts do not have the same function. So though many are one body in Christ and individually parts of one another, since we have gifts that differ according to the grace given to us, let us exercise them. If prophecy and proportion to the faith, if ministry and ministry, if one is a teacher and teaching, if one exhorts and exhortation, if one contributes in generosity, if one is over others with diligence, if one does acts of mercy with cheerfulness..." St. Paul is saying, "Look, we're all part of the same body, you know? And just because I'm an eye doesn't mean I can just leave the body and not think that's gonna affect the leg, you know? How are you gonna know where to go if you don't have any eyes? You know, we all have different functions, we all have a different individual mission, but we are part of one body, and we can't separate ourselves from that one body. And nothing, nothing can separate us." Romans, Chapter 8. Romans, Chapter 8. "What will separate us from the love of Christ? Will anguish, or distress, or persecution, or famine, or nakedness?" This is verse 35. "Or peril, or the sword? As it is written, 'For your sake we are being slain all the day; we are looked upon as sheep to be slaughtered. No, in all these things we conquer overwhelmingly through him who loved us. For I am convinced that neither death nor life, nor angels, nor principalities, nor present things, nor future things, nor powers, nor height, nor death, nor any other creature will be able to separate us from the love of God and Christ Jesus our Lord.'" Just because somebody dies, does not separate us from them. We still have access, you know? I have access to St. John Bosporus, he has been perfected. And anytime I have to teach a teenager or work with teenagers, I can ask for his intercession, and he can help me. So, we're in this together, we are part of one big family. And the saints are there to help us, they've been perfected, and we want to be perfected as well. So, we are part of this one body, one with Christ. And if any Protestant tries to tell you that the Church made up this communion of saints, it's been there from the very beginning. I mean, I have a whole list of quotes from the Church Fathers. In 200 AD, 300 AD, 345, St. Augustine, "For the souls of the pious dead are not separated from the Church, which even now is the Kingdom of Christ. Otherwise there would be no remembrance made of them at the altar of God and the partaking of the body of Christ." It's 354. St. Cyril, 315, Bishop of Jerusalem, talking about the Mass. This sounds really familiar, doesn't it? 315. "Then we commemorate also those who have fallen asleep before us, first patriots, prophets, apostles, martyrs, that at their prayers and intercessions God would receive our petition. Then on behalf also of the holy fathers and bishops who have fallen asleep before us, and in a word of all whom in past years have fallen asleep among us, believing that it will be a very great benefit to the souls for whom the supplication is put up, while that holy and most awful sacrifice is set forth." Saying, "Look, we can offer up our prayers and sacrifices for those in purgatory, for those that have gone before us." St. Basil the Great, "At this O Lord is the command of your only begotten Son that we share the commemoration of your saints, through whose prayers and supplications have mercy on us all and save us for the sake of your holy name which is called upon us." I mean, this has been the teaching from the very beginning, that we are part of one family, one communion of saints. And as we get ready to go into our final session of Christ and His Church, we see that these people are starting to get it, starting to get it, and we need to start to get it as well. You know, in this culture, we are living in the time of another Maccabean revolt. And the Church needs to wake up and understand that she might be persecuted, but it's worth dying for. It's worth dying for, it's worth doing whatever it takes to live our faith. We are the Church, and the Church is the light of the world. We have to be willing to be that light in a world full of darkness. In a world full of darkness, the Church is the light. And I don't care if, you know, if the president, or the government, or Planned Parenthood, or any other organization is trying to destroy the Catholic Church. You know, they don't know what they're up against, they don't know what they're up against. And this healthcare mandate and everything else is really bothering me, and then one night I had this thought, and I just peacefully went to sleep, that the Church has been here for 2,000 years. And through that time, many kingdoms have risen and fallen, mighty rulers have reigned, but the Church has been there through it all. And she's always proclaiming the truth, she's always been there. And no institution, or business, or organization in the world has affected the world more than the Catholic Church in the last 2,000 years. Nobody has fed more hungry, nobody has treated more sick, nobody has taught more children, nobody has helped more the poor, nobody. And the Church is not an institution, she is a family, she's a family. And the family is the building block of any society. If you destroy the family unit, you'll destroy that culture. The Church is a family, and she needs to wake up. We need to decide whose side are we on, because the battle's already been won, the victory has already been won. We know that we are promised, we just have to trust God. We have to be willing to live our faith, we have to learn to be the light of the world.